Welcome to the Wednesday, November 12th, 2014 Planning Board Meeting for the Town Agreement. The Board will come to order. It does have a quorum and we'll start with Roque. Ben?
Ben Crater.
Will Priest.
Robert O'Neil.
Bruce Sanford.
Steve Laney.
Greg Foster.
And with us this evening is Danielle taking the notes, Jim Seymour, a town planner, Chris Hansen will be right back, and Stephanie for our ordinance review work. This is a public proceeding and unless the Board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all of the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the Chairman if you are unable to hear or to see. The Board works for a published agenda and will be considering tonight's items in the following order. We have two minutes to review and then a review and approval of finding of facts for the Town of Raymond Communication Tower, the Port Harbor Marine Major Site Plan Review, and David Creep's Minor Amendment to the Site Plan, followed by some ordinance workshop and any plan or communications. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the Board votes on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written note of decision because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights and also as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the Board has completed its discussion on the project. Generally speaking, the appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate Appeals Board of Superior Court as otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this Board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual rights to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this Board records evidence of your appearance this evening in opposition and the basis of your opposition. All persons speaking, including representatives of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, state their name, address, and affiliation with the project. You will sign in the signing sheet if you are speaking for or against a project. All persons speaking shall address the Chairman. So we will start with the minutes of September 10th, 2014.
I shall move the minutes.
Is there a second? Second? Oh, you have a question?
I think the way this flows, it kind of gets backwards here, but on the second page, third paragraph, it says Mr. Gray, that's all about the lighting, but it's all about the road. It was about making the sidewalk into a ride over into a road. And now that I get the frontage, that was the deal. And so my point there was that I wanted the town's attorney to say that what we were doing was acceptable. And Jim had said he talked to the town attorney and she said it would be fine or whatever. And I felt that it was a stretch of the intent of the ordinance. So that's all I was asking for there was something for the town's attorney to say that was the case. Now, it may be forthcoming, but it kind of got lost in all of that. And the rest of it's all right. We all said the same thing. Well, I'm documenting, but I was specifically asking for the town attorney to...
Yeah, you asked to provide a letter saying it was in compliance with the driveway separation.
Yeah, right.
We have that?
Yeah.
Do you want to propose a little change?
Well, no, what he just said is fine. That's exactly what I was asking. It just didn't...
Didn't come through there?
Yeah.
There's an issue, in essence, that issue has not been resolved.
That's true.
Are there any other comments on the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor accepting the minutes and opposed? All right. Next have been accepted. Next up is our minutes from the Wednesday, October 15th, 2014.
I'll move the minutes.
Second. Is there any... Is there any discussion on those?
I have a question. On page two, the bottom, oh, page three, on the bottom, the conditions for approval said shift the tower away from buildings and boundaries or provide letter from an engineer regarding the structural integrity of the tower. Was that an either-or? Or were we asking for both? Move the tower away from the buildings and get a letter from an engineer about the structural integrity of the tower?
Well, my intent was to have a letter from an engineer explaining that it was a collapsed design tower and not a fallover type tower. That was my intent in bringing that up. And if we have that letter from the engineer, then I'm okay with that. If anyone on the Board had a different interpretation or a different wish.
I know.
But that's typical. That's what you would ask for in that situation would be, is the tower collapsible within the setback?
But also, I believe the abutter, and when I asked, I said, why can't you simply move it to the other side of that square? And they said there was no problem to do that. I believe the abutter was wanting it to be moved away from his barn as well. And I didn't see, so I almost thought it was an and rather than or. That they would move the tower to the other side of the, that square building area.
Yeah.
I think they've done that.
Okay. I think he said he was going to look at that.
It's in, it's in the, yeah, it's in the funny facts. I thought I read it, that they had...
Shift the tower away from buildings and boundaries, conditions for approval.
Yeah.
Or provide, or provide letter from an engineer regarding the structural integrity of the tower. And Greg, you're saying you think that should be an and?
I'm saying that I don't remember which way it was. I thought it was and.
I thought they were really two separately discussed issues that related to each other.
Right.
Yeah. I think it should be an and, not an or.
Well, why don't you go, why don't you go to, jump to the findings of facts and just look at, look at the conditions of approval for A and B. Does that cover what we, what we think?
I'm sure it does. Find it.
It'll be on the last page for the Raymond Communication Tower, where A says shift the tap, shift the tower location to the southerly corner of the tower compound to increase separation between the tower and the applicant's barn structure. And B is if the tower is within 100 feet of buildings or boundary lines, the applicant submit additional information regarding fall zones for this type of freestanding loudest tower. I'm reading the conditions of approval on the finding of fact. No, no, not the minutes.
Findings of fact.
Yeah, take mine. Maybe it's just the me... Just I write on it.
Just the minutes.
Yeah.
It's just the minutes, I think. It's okay. It's okay.
Yeah, I think the 100 feet gives, because it's a 100-foot tower. So, yeah, I think that's, that's...
Okay. So then I think what you're, what Greg is saying is should be an and. Right? To a should be an and, Greg, is what you...
Yes. It's just the minutes that are different, that's all. Sorry about that.
Well, they say it was a, everybody was trying to go on the back and forth on it, so it was fine.
I'll...
All right. Is there any other comments on the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? All right. We'll start with the review and approval of finding facts for the Town of Raymond Communication Tower. So the three, the conditions of approval then are the two that we just read, plus the third one is revision to the site plan as discussed, including changing the electrical service from overhead to underground. We just need a motion to approve.
Move that we approved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Jim, I just have a question on number eight that seems to be page, second to last page, the exterior lighting.
I didn't prepare that.
Oh, you didn't prepare that, did you? I was willing to prepare that. Well...
What's your question?
Eight says, "The applicant's cover letter indicates one light is proposed at the meter bank shelter box. The light is identified on sheets five and six as well as wall light fixture. It is not clear from the plans whether the light fixture will be facing away from the Woodbury McDonald Parcel or not," which I think is one of the things that came up for discussion.
I think it was supposed to be a cop.
Right. I think so too.
Which is a wall pack.
Which could be a wall pack.
So it's basically wall mounted and it's going to have a 180-degree throw that someone hooded down?
No, it's a deadbolt cut out with wall pack.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
How would change that verbiage?
So we need to change that verbiage to reflect that?
Instead of a wall light fixture, a, what do you call it?
Well, you either call it a wall with full shield, with fix, with full shield.
With full shield?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
So remove as amended.
Yep. So I don't know how we sign this now. Do we wait? How's that work?
It's just the language. Well, if you sign the last page, I'll just change the wording in it and then...
It's kind of like signing a blank check for you.
You can wait until next time. I'm fine with that, too.
All right. Do they have a discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? All right, it passes. Next up is the Port Harbor Marine. So the conditions of approval will be, condition A is depict the approximate areas of boat storage and display on the site plan. Condition B is provide additional stormwater quality treatment devices and a new catch basin to enhance the level of treatment prior to discharge the lake. Cut sheets and information on the proposed devices shall be submitted for review and approval. And item C is applicant shall provide documentation from the main department of environmental protection that the project is exempt from stormwater permitting.
Remove real group.
Is there a second?
Second. Came out Greek.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Last up is David Creep's Minor Amendment to the Site Plan. Am I mispronouncing your name?
It's just like Creep and G.
Okay.
They called out lots of K's, I believe.
I imagine. And there are no conditions for approval of this? On this one?
Standard conditions.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I just want a picture of my face on page two.
All those in favor?
That was just the...
I don't think my animals are in there.
Yeah, they can't sign that. I did do this one, but I have one 15.
Yeah, I can pull it up, it'll be there.
I think you just have an older one I had.
Take care of those, take care of that.
So they can sign it, but they have to change the date on it.
We are to the ordinance workshop. You're up already. We're working, we're working on a record here, so don't bog us down, Stephanie.
I'll do my best. All right. So in the memo that I, that Danielle gave you, we, I cut out things that we've already dealt with. So we're left with two items. Municipal use, the definition of municipal use, and accessory apartments. Start with municipal use. And I think where we left off was, there was a question as to why the term municipal use was actually listed in the Shoreland zoning land use table to begin with. It's not typically there and it was added in 2000. So we did, with Danielle's help, we found the planner at the time and spoke with him. And he, he said that they added it to accommodate a situation with the fire station on 302. Proposal for the fire station. It was added, I guess, to clarify that that wasn't allowed to use with Planning Board okay approval. And that was really the only purpose of it. So that kind of leaves us in a similar situation we were in before, but at least now we know why it was added. So essentially, it's sort of time to make a decision as to whether or not you want to add this as a definition. The potential is also there to remove it from the land use table in the Shoreland zoning ordinance or table it next year. Basically, some of the issues that came up was, and I think Mary Costigan, the town's attorney, has talked about this in her memo, the August 12th memo. And she talks about the issue being that you're, rather than looking at regulating the use, you're regulating the actual owner of the use, the applicant. And this kind of creates a problem because you've got a list of uses and then you're distinct, you're distinguishing a type of owner. So there could be an instance where you come up with a use that is a municipal applicant, but it's an allowed, or at least it's a possibly a permitted use in the LRR one or two districts. The other issue is that you don't have it, municipal use doesn't show up in your land use ordinance. So it's not actually in your, there's no definition for it as well. And so then the question becomes, well, should it be included in the land use ordinance? And if not, why is it being, why is it a distinction in your Shoreland zoning ordinance and not your land use ordinance? So I don't know if you want me to give an opinion on this or, you know, recommend, make a recommendation to the Board or if you want to have some discussion.
I'd love to hear your opinions, Stephanie.
Really?
Yes.
I hope you're ready for that.
I, I, reading what the town attorney is, has said, I think it's dangerous waters. And, and I, I think that there would have to, she's saying that you'd have to make a specific justification if you add this into your Shoreland zoning. So you'd have to distinctly identify why you're going to regulate the user rather than the use. And I'm not sure what the answer to that question is. It also doesn't affect projects that have already gone through Planning Board and been approved. So anything that's out there currently, this wouldn't, this wouldn't have an effect. And I'm, I'm not quite sure. My recommendation would be to, to table it.
Did we, did they need to come up with some other reason? I should know this, I was there at the time. But do we, do we need to come up with some of the reason to approve that fire station, that we needed to put municipal use in?
He wasn't clear on that and he said it was quite a while ago. So I think, yeah, it was a little bit.
What's odd about that is it went into the municipal use table in the Shoreland Zone. The fire station isn't in the Shoreland Zone. It's in Village Residential.
But there wasn't another proposal for a different fire station?
I think there was something on 302.
Yeah, it's supposed to be across the street.
Oh, well, that makes, that makes sense. If it was going to go across the street, then it would make sense.
Yeah.
So, Jim?
I got another curveball for you. I knew you didn't want to get out of here too early. If you go on page 66 of 70 in the definitions, Shoreland Zone, public facilities, another definition we have, which is never used anywhere. So...
What page are you looking at?
66 of 70.
It's not in the land use table?
It's different than the land use table. It's public places there. Look at the definition of public facility.
What are we looking at, public facility?
Yeah.
Is public facility anywhere else?
No.
Just that's the only place it shows up?
That's the only place it shows up. And if you go to the land use table, it's not even public facility. It's public places over there.
Because that's probably what's in the model ordinance.
I don't know. Maybe. So I don't know if that definition is one that you might want to just change to, or change the use table or, you know, that's the other option you could have. Instead of having municipal use, you could have public facility.
That actually is a very good suggestion.
Well, that public facility seems to cover everything that municipal use covers, doesn't it?
Right. So instead of having municipal use in the table, put public places.
Except it defines the use and not the user.
Facilities, you mean, public uses.
Oh.
Public facility here.
Right. And then the table use public uses? Or just say public?
Use public facility instead of municipal use.
But we don't want it to find the user, right? Isn't that what we're trying to get away from? So we, if we go with public facility, we're not, we're not defining the user, are we?
Well, but that gets back to the, again, any other municipality could come in and say this is a public use.
Exactly.
Or individual.
Because it says, in the public facility, it says governmental body or public entity.
But I'm still, I still don't really understand how we can stop another municipal coming in. They own the property.
Right.
It's their right to develop it in accordance with the ordinances. How can you say that no municipal can't do it, the private person can?
Well, and in particular, if they're choosing a use that is allowed or, you know, by special permit in that district and is simply owned by a municipal user.
I don't see how that can, I don't see how that can work.
I think my heartburn is more, you've got something in the use table that's undefined.
Yeah.
And I think, so I'm agreeing with you, is there's, you got, we have two choices, define it or get rid of it.
Yeah.
Because I think being undefined is causing more trouble.
Or replace municipal use in your table with public facility.
Right. But I'm going back to just the municipal question, municipal use question. It's undefined, so it either needs to be defined or removed.
I think it should be removed.
Right.
I agree.
And then go to the public.
Facility.
Facility in the land use table.
Yep. And move that over to, okay. What do we think? Greg?
It's simple, it's easy, and, you know, we're not going to murky the waters.
Bruce?
Trying to find section 14 of the actual table.
What page is the table?
It's on page 13, 12 and 13 of 70.
Close to the beginning.
Municipal use is on page 13.
15.
15 E.
What's the difference between public facility and public and private recreational areas?
Public facility doesn't have to be used for recreation.
Public facility, but not limited to buildings, property, recreational roads which are owned, leased, or otherwise operated. Any facility is public facility. I mean, we define recreation facility, so...
And, and you're saying that you don't think public facility is anywhere else in the document, in the Shoreland zoning ordinance?
I don't think so.
No, no. I think we did a circuit with Danielle. Perhaps we cut and paste all these use.
Yeah.
Which nuff definition you're asking, why is defined, public facility?
Yeah, I was wondering if it was in, anywhere else in the document? I don't know if it's part of the model ordinance or not.
Maybe.
Because it, because 23 deals with minimum structure development. Public facility would allow any building or structure.
Mm-hmm. We're not changing anything but the name. Do we have to go through all the ordinance process? Can it just be an administrative change?
Good question.
Um, I think any change to the Shoreland Zone needs to go through the DEP for their approval. The state has to approve the change.
It's a simple...
Which I think they would in this case, but I think we...
Clarifying.
I don't know whether we need to do a warrant article on it for this small of a change. I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so either.
But we can check with the town attorney on that before we draft up a warrant article.
Okay.
But it seems like this works. What is puzzling to me is why they felt 2000 public facility, that was in the ordinance, why that didn't cover it for a fire station. I just don't understand why they needed to put in municipal into the table. I don't get that. Maybe we'll never know.
I don't either. I don't, I don't remember.
I was on the board back then. I don't remember either.
Oh, is it? I'm pretty sure you go around. You want it? All right. So where are we?
Waiting on attorney's opinion, I guess.
So are we, are we in agreement that we're going to drop municipal use? We're going to use public facility and then we're going to investigate how we're going to have to go back to do that? Does that pretty much sum it up?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Do you need your motion?
Nope. I don't need any motion for that. We're not really, we just, we're just going to put the ball on the motion and see how we're going to do it and then we'll make the motion.
So... If I'm getting you correctly, Bob, we will check with the town attorney. We'll report back to you whether we need to do a warrant. Then you will vote whether to do it and send it to the selectmen or vote to do an administrative change through the DEP.
Correct.
Got it.
Steve, if I can request one little, one small, little tiny job for the planners. Is there any way we can go through this table and the definitions and make sure, and then also the Site Plan Review table, just so we can make sure everything's consistent? Because we, here's one that popped up again. We hadn't...
Great.
I mean, I think maybe we're some time to have someone go through and do that.
We have done that a couple of times. It's just, I think it's just so convoluted.
I don't think you can ever exhaust every possible solution. That's the problem. It's like, what can you, what can I do with my property? That's the question I hear all the time. And there's a gazillion things you could do, depending on circumstances.
Well, I think Steve's just talking about making the language all match up.
I know, I like that.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can ever think of all...
I think we got pretty close.
I think it'd be easy to go from the table to the definitions, but it might be more difficult to go from definitions to a table. There's a lot of definitions, I think, that are kind of, they may show up somewhere in the ordinance, but maybe not in a table, so...
Right. Or, yeah, which we've already run into.
Right.
You moving on?
Yes.
All right. Accessory apartments. Chris and I, the last, at the last point that we discussed this, Chris and I were going to get together and work through some changes on this, and we did that. We went through and developed an accessory apartment definition. And that's on the first page of this memo at the bottom. And basically, it's, half of it contains existing language, kept the 700 square feet excluding stairways, detached or, attached or detached language. And then the last sentence and a half here is added on for clarity. And I think you, you guys need to make a decision if you want to keep that. It says, "And located on the same parcel with a single-family dwelling, the apartment shall contain a kitchen and a bathroom which are separate from and not used in common with the principal dwelling unit." That's typical language that I'm seeing for similar terms. Chris, does that make sense to you?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then the bulk of the, originally... And then, the bulk of the, originally, like we talked about, this was actually in the definition section, and not at all in the body of the ordinance. So, we've trimmed that definition, amended it, and, and that's proposed for the definition section. But then the rest of the language is actually proposed for a new section Z in the minimum, Article nine minimum standards. And that is on the second page. And this first paragraph is the existing definition. That's the way it stands now. And the proposed, the second part of this is the proposed language. The highlighted portions are the changed areas. So one of the things that we did was we changed the lot coverage from thirty percent to fifteen percent. And that's basically to be consistent with shoreland zoning and the other aspects of the land use ordinance. We moved some sentences around. I think we, we talked at the last meeting about the septic issue. We actually just reorganized the sentences, and I think it was backwards. So if you look at the top, um, let's see, where does it talk about this? Um, okay. "If the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms exceed by more than one the number of bedrooms that the existing system is designed for a replacement or expanded system shall be installed before occupancy," and then it goes on from there. We changed it around, and now it reads, "If the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms increases by one, a replacement or expanded system shall be designed and recorded in the registry of deeds. If the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms exceed by more than one the number of bedrooms that the existing system is designed for, a replacement or expanded system shall be installed before occupancy." So it was really just a reorganization.
And that mirrors state subsurface waste water rules.
And those are, that's the only changes there, so it's, it's.
I got one question.
Chris?
Um, I think you need, on the first part where, where you're exceeding the bedroom by one, I think that has to be exceeding what the system is designed for. Cause I can take, I can take my, it's, it's not clear. My house is a two-bedroom house, I've got a five-bedroom septic. So if I put in a one-bedroom apartment, why do I have to provide another design? I can, I've still got room for three, three bedrooms in my current system. So I'm saying, kind of assuming they're already at their capacity for bedrooms. But there may be situations where they aren't.
Yeah, we had raised that point before, that if the system that's existing is designed for a larger number than the house plus what you're adding, this language still suggests that they need to expand the system, which is not really, you know, called for. In all cases.
Well, I, I think when it says potential bedrooms, that's covering it. Because if you've got a two-bedroom home, and you've got a system designed for three, that's the extra potential bedroom.
But I can take mine, it's designed for five. I've got a two-bedroom house.
I think there's probably a way to.
So we would put in, exceeds the number of bedrooms the system is designed for.
Designed for, I think you need that system designed for in both, in both situations, that's all I'm saying.
That's a simple fix.
Yeah.
Yep.
So did the proposed changes, would it, would it impact, were we changing anything that's going to, that actually is impacting the way someone is going to be able to develop?
Um, we are changing the lot coverage in the specific.
Thirty to fifteen.
But that was inconsistent with the rest of the shoreland zones.
We're actually making it, um, compliant with shoreland zoning and the town's own lot coverage requirements.
Okay.
I don't know how it ever got in there thirty percent. Because we have fifteen percent in all zones.
So even if they were to go through a process, process, they'd still have, they'd still hit that fifteen percent.
That's correct.
At some point, so they're not, they're not losing anything. They'd still have to adhere to the lower number, fifteen percent.
Cause it's more restrictive.
Yeah.
We really need to add that clarifying language of, that the existing system is designed for. Need also to stick that language in the next sentence. If the total number of bedrooms or potential bedrooms increases by one, a replacement or expanded system shall be designed.
Look at this memo. It's already in there. Did you hand this, did you hand this one up?
Bill's, I get, there was something we just got handed out today.
Didn't you?
No, it should've been in your packet. The old memo and a newer memo.
Yeah, cause it's in there on the, on the newer one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's in the second sentence, just not the first.
All right, so we okay with that?
Good.
And. Stephanie, you're okay with what we need?
Yep.
All right. Let's keep going.
That's it.
What about fees and penalties?
That was from us and staff.
Oh, okay.
So in certain areas of the ordinance, as we move through it, there are actual, like, fee numbers that are suggested, and they haven't been caught or weeded out over the years. And the hope is to go through the ordinances and revise them, so it will say as set by the selectmen per the fee schedule. But in the meantime, we would like to edit this overall, the fees and penalty ordinance to say, basically, if you find a fee in the schedule, the fee schedule will supersede it. So that, that way, if there's a conflicting number, the newer number prevails. So until we can.
Until, okay.
Cause you know what I mean, I tried to do a fee schedule cert, like a fee search of the ordinance, and unfortunately, we used several different words to, like, money, penalties, fees, you know, payment. So it wasn't very easy. And rather than filling the ordinance up with, I mean, filling this warrant up with a whole bunch of them, I'd rather just come forward next year with a, a full list that takes care of them all at once, so, if that's all right with you.
And take any mention of actual dollar amounts out of the ordinance and just say, go see the fee schedule.
Correct. It's much cleaner that way, and also it, it helps us to stay more consistent with the times, so.
Okay.
And then I think Jim had stuff regarding, um.
Yeah. Added, I took a shot at handling the site plan amendments.
Mm-hmm.
And gave you a whole bunch of new language in there. What Chris and I have seen is, you know, we're getting site plans returning. Mr. Greif was actually one of those type of plans. It was unfortunate, but based on what we had, you know, he was forced to come back to the board. But clearly, that's something that, you know, staff could easily have handled.
Yep.
Uh, but there was no tools in motion to allow us to do that. So we put together here, um, we've got four different types of plan amendments. Obviously, minor site plan amendments and major site plan amendments would come back to the board. Uh, de minimis review actually would most likely be done by Chris with probably just my, you know, oversight. Um, and the other one would be minor staff review, which Chris and I would both review. Um, the other thing would be all, any amendment, any plan amendment after five years would be processed as a new application. Just because of the timetable, the board's probably turned over, familiarity's gone. Uh, we just felt also from a review standpoint, you know, no one's gonna remember what we did five years ago, so we're all gonna invest quite a bit of time into this, so it should be treated as a new application, regardless of, of the revision or change. Um, but just quickly going through this, obviously, this is the Article ten site plan review, and I just gave you the whole article, the whole piece of the article that deals with site plan review. And then we added three amendments to site plan. Then we had A, which was de minimis reviews. A site plan amendment that includes revisions to a previously approved plan, that includes minor field and structural revisions that are considered incidental, impose no adverse effects to the site plan approval, and can be addressed by the code enforcement officer. Oops, that should be an and. And shall be reviewed and approved in a place staffed as de minimis amendment. Then I just kinda put a little blurb in there, such documents shall be dated, stamped, and noted. With a letter of acceptance by staff, whoops, again, another typo, to the applicant stored in the project file, no public notices will be required.
Okay.
It's pretty much the same with minor staff, uh, plan reviews. We just kind of up the, you know, the requirement, um, it's just orientation, modifying a building, revising landscape or buffers, but essentially keeping the modification that keeps the area less than the structural revisions. Or that maintain the minimal intent of the previous approved site plan requirements. Um, again, um. We would require a public notice for that.
You would require?
Would not.
You would not?
No. Only under minor site plan amendments and major site plan amendments would we require, um, be required, be public notices. And actually, minor site plan amendment would be treated just like a minor site plan review by the planning board. And major site plan amendments would be treated like a major site plan with the board. But just give some clarity, cause people come in and they, you know, oh, I'm coming in for an amendment. Well, actually, they're, you know, developing half the site all over again, you know? So I understand by legally, it is amended site plan, but we have to have tools in our ordinance just saying, no, it gets treated as a whole new site plan review.
Okay.
And we're just trying to create some thresholds in there so it can help us in some consistency with, with applicants.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, for something like David here tonight, you know, I mean, it was unfortunate he had to come to the board because it's time consuming. Uh, and some of those small things, you don't need to be burdened with either.
So where would, where would you, where do you see David falling in here?
His would've fallen under, um, minor staff review, cause it was a building orientation.
And our other one? The boy har, the Harbor Marine, where would you have seen that fall?
Uh, I didn't even consider that one. Where would you think that one?
I thought that was a new application.
Oh, that was a new application.
Yeah, that was over five years, so it would've been, right.
Okay.
And the one that you have, well, will be coming forward to you the next meeting, would've been minimal, probably minor site remen, like, site plan amendment as well.
Okay.
So they would, that one would come back to the board likely anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Just because there's so many improvements with the back of that lot.
Right.
But again, uh, just give some consistency, cause somebody just looks at the, the building factor in the site plan review, and they think they can automatically go to staff. Well, there's other pieces to that that go into effect. And we always have the right to move it up regardless.
Right.
Yep.
That was my, my question, you're saying the one that's coming up would go under, are we saying, is it?
Minor site plan amendment.
Is it B or is it C?
C.
C.
Okay. And it's not clear that C and D automatically go to the planning board, or are they?
They do, because under minor review, they go automatically to the planning board.
Okay, all right.
And we can put, you know, if you want, I can put planning board in there. But if you follow that Article ten B two, it automatically to the planning board.
All right.
That was good, Jim. You got another typo, Jim, just, uh, in that C, right near, right near the end, just left up with it.
Well, I'll, we'll go through, I put this together quickly just to give you something to, to kinda look at tonight, but we can clean it up. Yep, yeah, I see it.
All right, any comments?
I've been through the, the whole memo, and compared to what's in there, it seems to make a lot of sense to me. Frankly, I think it's heading in the right direction.
Good. Anyone else? You okay? Proceed. All right, let's go, let's do it. All right. So are remaining scheduled for ordinance updates? Have we covered everything? The last piece of paper here. So our next meeting, December tenth, warrant review and vote to send to public hearing?
You may have a busy agenda that night. So, um, there's strong to almost certain, uh, that Fry Island will be back. I'm not certain whether they'll have their DEP approval, but I think they're at a point where they're ready to come back. Obviously, you're gonna have the Myers, uh, amended site plan coming before you as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Fry Island's always very time consumption. So I don't know if you wanna start, um, this earlier, or?
It's up to the board.
Well, when do we, when is our, normally we work backwards.
Right, I just wonder, maybe you wanna do like a six o'clock or six-thirty workshop? Cause I don't know.
Oh, and get this over with early?
Get this over, and then at seven, whatever, where we're at, we stop at seven and just go right to the public hearing, or extension of Fry Island.
That's, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Rather than another night, yes.
Rather than another night.
Six o'clock, start with.
So I don't know if you want six.
Six or six-thirty, six?
Or try to do it afterwards.
What do we, what do we have left to do at the next meeting? Really just going over the warrant language?
Well, actually, we probably could do it in half hour.
We probably could do it in a half hour.
Yeah.
I would say, cause like, by this point, you guys have reviewed it quite a few times. It's literally just double checking and making sure that it looks right for your public hearing.
Right.
So.
Yeah, well, we do, I mean, just.
Okay, let's go six-thirty.
And we'll do a half hour.
All right with the board?
Absolutely.
So do, we'll start the next one at six-thirty, we'll do nothing but the or, get the ordinance done?
Yeah, and at seven o'clock, we can start with the regular meeting for Fry Island.
Sound good?
Um, you gonna hold everyone out, or they, that's what they come in, or just doing the ordinance?
No, they can come in.
Yeah, it's still public meeting.
Still public meeting, but just for the public. I don't know, did you notify them at seven, or?
Hmm?
Do we have a public notice for that one? No, we don't, do we?
For what one?
Fry Island, if it comes back.
Well, it will be a public hearing one, it could be a, a major change.
We can, yeah, you can just say seven, and then we'll just, you know, we can take a break if we have to.
So are we considering it a major change?
At this point, no. What I've seen so far, no. They have not made a formal submission, so I don't know certainty, but. I'm ninety-nine, forty-four, one hundred sure that it's not going to be a substantial change.
You don't think it will be?
I don't think it will be. They've, they've, they're going through with that driveway as we suggested.
Okay.
And they've made, they've made some changes at the entrance, but it's nothing that's substantial to warrant public, new public hearing. You can accept public comment anytime if you want, but it won't be notified, won't be, uh, won't be notifications for public hearing.
Okay. No, I just didn't want it to be notified as a public hearing.
No, if they were gonna do the whole leg and entryway and everything else, they definitely would've come in, but they're keeping the orientation the same.
Okay.
Myers will be a public hearing, though.
Uh, yeah, but that, that shouldn't generate very much interest.
I don't think so, no.
Yep, that's fine. Okay.
Uh, Daniel, when you put the agenda together for the next meeting, do you have any way of flagging the six-thirty start time in red or?
Bruce has just put like twenty-five font or something.
I'll send out several notices as well as making it on the website for the public.
Send you an alarm clock first.
I'll call you, has a.
There you go.
We'll be at drive. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Push pass.